Afternoon, everyone.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Caterie.
This is Economic Development Committee, and it was brought forth by a notion of City Council Vice President Tracy Whitfield, who is here with me, as well as Director of Housing Jerry MacCathery. And the topic is housing and procurement process is an interest of the council. And obviously, housing being a great issue here in the next couple of years, as it has been the last couple of years. Tracy thought this would be a good time to discuss the procurement process. So further ado, Tracy, if you want to kick it off and lead us with some questions?
Sure. So basically, I'm gonna just tell you why this came about and why specifically some of you were chosen to be at the meeting. So I was getting, you know how you put like houses up that have funding to go with them? So some people were like, "I had the best, the best packet and I didn't get selected." And I'm like, "I don't know." Okay, I'll look into it. And so I was like, I asked Sue or the people, oh, I asked Lauren to send me some of the applications. And then I asked her to send me the selection criteria. And then I asked her to send me who was on the team to do the selecting of the people. You see Brian Connors?
Brian Connors is here.
Okay. And so when she sent it, I was just a little bit like concerned, I guess, because it still feels like the same individuals are gonna be selected. Because one of the criteria was how much experience the developer has. And so not to call anyone out, it was one in particular that is gonna always have the most experience because they've just been around longer. And so they were getting highly advantageous. But there were also some developers out here that I know that are newer. But they've done great work too. But they're never gonna have the experience of this particular developer. So I'm just like, how do they get a fair chance at getting some of these developments if the criteria is what it is? And so that's kind of what I wanted to talk about.
So maybe to expand upon that, maybe you can walk us through, what is the procurement process in the Housing Department? Would that be to start off with?
Sure. Well, I think, and you know, it depends a bit on what the project is. But certainly, it sounds like from what you're talking about, you're talking about using city-owned land and federal funds to build affordable homeownership projects.
Yes. That's one piece, and then I'll...
But that's, I would say, a major part of the procurements we do. So, you know, we receive HUD funds either from the home grant or we have also had some leftover disaster recovery funds. And we set those aside for development of affordable homeownership. Those are gonna be homes that get sold to households with incomes up to 80% of the area median income. We have tried to connect those with city-owned lots because there are lots typically that are good infill lots that are in neighborhoods that are good for development, that are good for homeownership development, and they're neighborhoods where we're trying to increase the amount of homeownership. So we pair the lot with the money. And what we have been doing for the last few and intend to continue doing is we have someone design the house. So we have been doing that sort of in advance of the procurement. And some of that was, this is an area that has been very, it is very regulated and HUD has monitored and looked at what we've done on these projects a number of times. And one of the things HUD has said to us is, "How do you know you're comparing apples to apples?" So we want you to be putting together a design so that people are bidding for the same thing. They're not coming up with a plan for the house. So we put all that together and we put out an RFP that says, "Here's the land, here's the design, and we have up to this amount of money." And then we ask for proposals. We do, I brought one of the most recent ones we did. The comparative criteria. Sometimes there's a little bit of flex in what those are, but it's mostly in these areas. We look at the proposer history and capacity, knowing that they can get it done. And particularly, we do look at whether they have history with federal funding. It's complex. And we have had developers in the past that have had trouble with the federal funds. There is a level of record-keeping that is very intense. And sometimes, if a developer hasn't done that before, they can have trouble meeting the requirements. So we look at history and capacity. We look at feasibility, whether their development plan makes sense, the schedule and budget makes sense, and their costs are reasonable. We look at achievement of public policy goals, including the goal of neighborhood revitalization and, you know, the enhancement to the site and surrounding areas. We look at whether they're ready to proceed and whether they have the ability to comply with the home regulations or whatever federal funding source there is. And then we look at the financial benefit and maximizing the use of federal funds. So that's looking at how much they're offering for the house, but also how much then they would sell it for. Looking, you know, trying to balance. We're looking for housing that is affordable to people who live in the city, but also we would like some return. So those are the things we look at. We have a committee of multiple people, including we invite, so it's multiple city departments are part of the review team. And then we invite usually the neighborhood council and the neighborhood council from the neighborhood to send a representative. And we go through and we score each proposal and select the, or recommend that the mayor go forward with the one that scores the highest.
So on this particular one, I have Brian Connors, Tina Quigliato Sullivan, you, Phil Dromy, Bob Demucis, Jalisa Devilla Ramos, and Darcy Baraki on this scoring committee based on what Lauren sent to me.
Is this the Ringgold property?
Yep.
Okay.
It's one, it's one.
And so just to say, so that property is in the North End. We would have invited New North Citizens Council to be part of the scoring committee, except that Mi-Hi, which is associated with New North, applied. So it would have been a conflict of interest. So while we typically have the neighborhood association, we did not in the case of the Ringgold property.
And that's the one I'm really like talking about because it felt like an unfair advantage to me that they would win that property because they have many years of experience. They also have experience dealing with the federal funds. But I'm just trying to get at like, how do we make it more fair and equitable? How do we get other developers involved? Like, can we do something like a partnership or mentorship or something that say like, can you all work together on a project? Just so, you know, people feel like they have a chance. Because like, when I even look at Home City Development, Wayfinders, those, they're always gonna like win. If like you sending out, for example, you know, the one that we're working on now, you're gonna send it out to a preferred list or whatever. You're gonna have these developers that have been doing it a lot longer, that have experience working with different funding. And they're gonna win. And so you're still leaving the same population of people out of getting the opportunity to do some of these projects. I did see like Hope CDC when, one, I think on Pine Street or something. But it's just like, how, like, we're always gonna have the posts first. I'm not naming anybody to be against them, they do good work. But how do we still get the newer developers to be able to, you know, have a shot? And then the process has changed because before, when the RFP would go out, it wouldn't go to the whole preferred developers list if an organization was interested in a particular property. Now it has to go to this preferred developers list, which is a fair way to do it. But the people who are doing the research on the property and bringing it to the table are probably not gonna get the opportunity to do anything with the properties now that's going out for RFP. So those are a couple of the concerns that I do have.
So I would say a few things in response to those concerns. One, you know, in terms of the history or the need for, the need for experience, I think it is important to point out...
I'm just telling you this because I don't know why.
Okay.
Just so you...
Thank, I didn't see it.
I know. Something's up with it.
These are HUD funds. If there, if anything goes wrong with these projects and the project does not deliver, the city has to pay back non-federal funds. So we have to take it out of the general budget to pay back HUD. So I think some of it is, we're trying to balance, we absolutely want to encourage local developers. At the same time, we are trying to be as the best stewards we can of federal money. And it's hard to use federal money to take a chance on someone that's unproven. So I think that's where we're trying to balance, you know, what we can do to support new developers while making sure that we don't get the city into any trouble with the federal, with the federal funds.
And to that point, there isn't any requirement on the federal level to undertake what Tracy's talking about, supporting local development. There isn't like any program or anything like that to chop up a, chop up a grant to a smaller, more manageable size. There isn't anything like that.
Well, I'll say, most of these, we do actually as single houses almost always. So we do make them very small projects. We do try to encourage competition and allow competition. And we have absolutely awarded to people other than those nonprofits. You know, recent ones were CNC Construction, I know got some. You know, there have been some smaller developers. One of the things that HUD does require is sort of some preference around Section 3. Section 3 is local hiring. So that is part of the criteria when we're looking for advancing public policy. They need to talk about how they are encouraging public, how they are encouraging local hiring. And one of the things I will say about New North or North End Housing Initiative is they use youth build. So they're actually paying local folks who are not employed in the community to get employment and get experience. So it is definitely something that weighs very heavily in their favor. I think the other thing we tend to do to developers is say, you know, the developer themselves don't make a lot of money on these. There is a cap on how much money they can have. You know, the people who are doing the work are the construction crew. And so we look for who they're hiring as the construction crew. And we make sure we have a lot of things in there looking for how they're pointing it toward local contractors. So those are some of the things I can say. The other thing, you know, I think we have, in terms of what we're doing to support, so, you know, this is housing development. There is also economic development and how are we supporting local contractors and local developers? I think some of what we've done is our connection through Mass Housing. We're part of something called the Neighborhood Hub, which has enabled them to provide us with technical assistance for emerging developers. So where there is an emerging developer that says, "I have a project," we're able to go to the state and ask for free technical assistance. So we have two developers that are taking advantage of that right now. And that really is that kind of support that is that mentoring support is exactly what that does. So one of them was, is a developer doing a project and was linked with a development consultant that has done a lot of those kinds of projects. It's a bigger affordable housing project. So has been really walking through and mentoring. The other one is Hope CDC, which was partnered with someone who was able to help them think about finding what kinds of projects they could do. And now the next step is likely to be connecting them with a different developer who can help them focus on a project and mentor them. So I think anyone interested in that mentoring, it does, you know, they do need a project and the city will happily connect anyone to them. That mentoring is there and that's, we really wanna use it.
So how does Hope CDC and the other one know about this and then other developers don't know about it? Like, why do they have the inside detail and other developers don't have that? Because I've never heard that before.
So...
If I may please?
Yeah, let me finish my question. Zeta, we see your hand. I just wanted to finish my...
Go ahead, Madam. Go ahead, Madam Vice President.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure you knew I was here.
It's my last one.
Okay.
There were Neighborhood Hub meetings that were interested in development in the Mason Square neighborhood that people came to and were part of that conversation.
But then even, I'm sorry, Zeta, this is just follow-up. Even still, like, they were at the Neighborhood Meeting, so they got privy to this information where other developers did not. That is not a fair advantage. That's a fair advantage for them, but it's not fair for other people who are not even invited to the Neighborhood Hub meetings. I have a property development company. I'm gonna be as transparent as I can. And we have never been invited to that nor heard about this technical assistance. And I have been talking to you, Jerry, about development and things like that.
We could certainly invite, well, I will say, so for probably the last year, it has been, nothing's been happening with it. The person who was the Neighborhood Hub left Mass Housing and the project has been pretty dormant, but those earlier connections have continued. We are, I am talking to Mass Housing right now about reinvigorating it. And certainly, something we could do is invite Mass Housing to come out and do a community meeting and talk about their mentorship program and how to connect into it. And, you know, it's not trying to be hidden.
I don't think it's trying to be hidden, but it certainly is not being broadly shared either. I'll say that. And it could just be oversight, not purposefully done.
We have Zaida, Zaida Govan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and Madam Vice President. I, I know, and thanks, Jerry, for, you know, doing the hard work that you're doing in the city because this is absolutely a big need. I think, I was thinking about what Madam Vice President was talking about. And I've been hearing her talk about this for the last four years since I've been on the City Council. And I'm wondering if there's a way for us to develop some sort of pipeline, I guess you could call it, to that mentoring program? If there would be a list of some of the, you know, smaller local developers that might be able to be put in touch with, you know, the people who are currently doing the work or who are currently mentoring, maybe some of the other developers might be interested in mentoring as well. But if there was a list that we could develop of these smaller developers so that they could be out there, because I honestly don't know them, right? I know about Council Whitfield's because I've heard her talk about it. But I don't know all the local small developers because I'd love to be able to reach out to them somehow. So I'm wondering if somewhere, I don't know where this would happen. It could be on the City Council, it could be somewhere else. But we could develop a list of these developers to help them kind of like, you know, get trained, get, you know, learn the paperwork. Because Jerry is right. You know, the federal government has some documentation that sometimes it just doesn't make any sense, but it's there. And I think learning how to navigate that is something that would be vital for everyone to know. That's my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Govan. We have Caterie Walsh, Council Walsh.
Thank you, Chairman Corrin. I have a couple of questions. One is, how are the RFPs advertised?
So they go through the procurement department. So it is definitely all the regular things that procurement does, which is publish it in the, in the central register. I know that, I believe Lauren sends them to the City Council and to Neighborhood Councils. We on these send them to a long list of, we have, or sort of the, there has been a developed a list of people interested in tax title properties, interested in development, you know, hundreds of people on that list. We email that list out to them. We post it on social media, on the city's Facebook page and the Economic Development Facebook page. So I know that, and we often are publishing it. I think we also publish it in LaVos and Metro Record. So we try to get it out there as far as possible, as widely as possible.
Well, I think it's, from what you've said and what Tracy has said, I think it's tricky because you've gotta adhere to federal guidelines. But we also wanna, you know, make sure everybody gets a fair shot. But my big question is about federal funds and the times we're living in. And are we impacted by any of the pullbacks on federal funding?
We, in, so among the HUD funds we get, we have not yet been. Because there's a, the federal government has a continuing resolution for the existing year. We are expecting our, we're waiting for the actual dollar amounts, but we expect to get the same amount of CDBG and home funds that we got last year. So we do not expect a cut this year that starts July 1. Certainly, at the federal level, there is a threat of and talk of huge reductions to HUD funds in the following year. It wouldn't impact us until July of 2026.
Yeah. Do ADUs don't fall into any of these categories, do they?
No, we haven't had any projects where we're funding ADUs.
Have you heard of any interest in them?
Not, not, not in funding. I don't, you know, so it's typically a zoning issue. So I think if people are interested, they would be going to the Planning and Zoning Department to express interest. And I don't know if they've been seeing those come in.
Yeah, I'd say it's been, from Phil Dromy's perspective, it's so far, it's been very limited. A lot of people have talked about it, but I think he's only, I think he's only gotten one, one actual application. He's had several who are kind of like talking and going through the process, but it hasn't been an overwhelming number of applications yet.
Well, thank you, Jerry, for your expertise. And hopefully, we can come up with a solution where everybody gets a shot.
Yeah. Because what also like concerns me is like, you'll have, like, I think maybe a month ago or so, we approved Wayfinders getting the $500, you know, Home City Development, I think, getting a $500 property. And it seems like those organizations always get them. And so I've been getting questions, and I question it, like, how come they're the only ones bidding on? Because you'll come and you'll say there was only one bid and it'll be them. Like, they're bigger organizations that got the most money, but they get the opportunity to that one parcel or the 10 parcels, I think. Home City Development got 10 parcels in Mason Square. And then the people that's living in Mason Square that are developers are not getting the opportunity because...
Tracy, do they say why they, they never know about the RFPs?
They just say they don't know about it.
If I can, so I think some of it depends on whether it's with money or not. We put out lots sometimes because developers have said, "We have scored a grant to develop this lot, to develop lots." And we have said, "Okay, so we'll make lots available that have to be limited to affordable homeownership." And developers say, "I can't, I can't build an affordable house with no money." And it's like, right, this may not be the lot for you because we are trying to, within the confines of a competitive structure, make lots available to people who have gone out and gotten money. And I will say, both Home City Development and Wayfinders went out and got large grants. So Home City has a $2 million grant from the NSP program. Wayfinders got a, they got both a, an earmark from the state and they have also gotten an enormous contribution from Mass Mutual. So they're bringing money to the table. And I think that's one of the things, you know, we, and if we're going to be making lots available, I think otherwise, if we're making a lot available and it's not part of a project that's trying to make housing, typically, that's the treasurer's office that is either auctioning them off or otherwise RFP-ing them, you know. For, you know, if, when I'm involved, typically, it's because the goal is housing. And, and so it is. And to do affordable housing, in our city and our market, you can't do it without, without federal or state funds.
You have it here.
With Zaida, if you wanna chime in? Councilor Govan?
Yes, please. Thank you so much. That's exactly what I was thinking about, Jerry, that when, but people, you know, get these lots and respond to the RFPs, they have money, you know, to back them up. But I think to Council Whitfield's point, you know, they had to get help to get there to be able to, you know, be eligible for those grants that they're getting for the earmarks that they're getting from the state. So we have to find a way to try to help the smaller local developers get to that place. And I think I really love Council Whitfield's idea of having some sort of a mentorship program. So if there's a list of developers, is there a way for us to share that list with current developers or even develop some type of a program where we like assign, you know, smaller local developers to the big developers so that they could partner up just to maybe do some training or some, you know, mentoring, as we said? I'm wondering if that, that can happen. I would love to see that happen. Again, I don't know where it would come from, but that's something that I think we, we would love to do. And another note, Jerry, I wanted to ask you a question regarding, you know, the developers that have, that develop these houses. And what they do, I imagine, is, you know, sell them to realtors or to landlords to rent these places out. Right now, you know, there's some issues going on, I think, with local landlords, I guess you could say, actually, probably not local landlords, that are, the tenants that are there, some of them are having a problem with the other tenants because there's some noise complaints, garbage complaints. So a question that I had, I actually asked the City Council staff to see if we could find an answer to this is, where would developed properties, where would they go, you know, to get recourse to help them, you know, keep their... developed properties, where would they go, you know, to get recourse to help them, you know, keep their properties, you know, good and, you know, the value up? Because I've been getting complaints that that's not happening. Ordinance violations are being made, police are called. You know, they're responding, but it doesn't seem like anything is happening. Like, right now, as a matter of fact, on, in my ward in, on Cardinal Street, there's a big issue with noise and, you know, the landlord basically saying, well, there's nothing really I can do about it. And they're actually a local landlord, a good, you know, landlord for the most part. But this specific property, there's another property in Ward, it's off of Berkshire Avenue, I can't think of the street right now. But they have debris all over the yard and there's, it's not being taken care of. So I'm being asked about, you know, what can, what's the recourse after they've gotten violations? When do they go to Housing Court for that? If you can answer that, I don't know if you can, Jerry.
A little bit. So one of the things you started with was how these houses get sold. So I do want to answer that first and then go to what to do about problems in the neighborhood. We don't actually sell them through a Realtor. There is significant demand for affordable homeownership. So we have a lottery where people who are approved for a mortgage put in and it is randomly chosen who can buy that house. So again, so the city is very involved with that process to make sure that it's fair. And yes, it's not sold on the open market. To the second point, I think you're right, it is a matter of, you know, well, calling, making complaints to 311 about exterior conditions. You know, I think this time of year is really hard. Coming out of winter, there is often a lot of trash and debris and stuff. And I feel like the ordinance squad is extremely busy. But they do go out and they cite people, they cite people for trash and problems in their yard. And then if it's not taken care of, they go to court on that. And noise, noise complaints, please, yes.
Okay, so you said they go to court. Is it the code enforcement that goes to court?
The law department. Well, so it's, there's, there's an order and, you know, if they, well, I think they, actually, I'm gonna stop there because I may be talking more than I know. Certainly, they fine, they fine and they put a lien on the house. I think there may be limited circumstances they're actually going to court to enforce it.
Okay, yeah, because I know the homeowners that I'm talking about are complaining, you know, that there have been fines multiple times. When is it that, when is the line drawn? And I guess I asked the City Council staff to see if they could investigate it for me. I think they're looking into it. But that's, you know, that would be really helpful to know so that we could let the residents of our city know. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jerry.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had one more question about the process because when I first met with you, you said like, come, if you have an interest, bring it back to me. Then now it goes to Treasury?
Yes, so Treasury used to, so the treasurer is actually the owner and the custodian of city-owned properties that have been taken by tax title. It used to be that Jelissa Davila Ramos worked in our office and she did procurement and she did taking care of the, getting maintenance of those properties. She has moved, that position moved to the Treasurer's Department, same person doing it, but it's not under me, it's under the Treasurer's Office. I will say, you know, one of what happens with Treasurers now. They, they have semi-regular meetings where they bring in all the departments and they go through the tax title properties and they say, you know, what's happening with this, what's happening with that? And I know there was a meeting one or two weeks ago where they said there's like four properties where there is interest in these, so we should put them out for RFP. I think actually they've asked my office to do it, that it won't come out of Treasurers, it will come out of my office. But that hasn't happened yet, but those will be getting released for RFP.
Brian, is your only, is your only involvement is on the review committee?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we, it's, the RFP process is kind of similar across the board. So when we, you know, we dispose of commercial property for the most part in our side, which I would say there's less quantity of than housing. But it's the same process, you know, the way it's structured under 30B is you are developing this criteria that, you know, ranks proposers based on their experience. So it, I think Jerry spelled it out well. It is a, it's a balance of, like, we want to figure out a way to support young and local developers. But then the 30B disposition process is kind of contrary to that because, you know, if somebody has 10 years' experience and somebody has one year's experience in your, the way the criteria are built, it's hard to award it to somebody with less experience. So it's a, it's a, it's a good point. I don't think there's a perfect solution to it, but I think we'd certainly be open to, to talking about it further and figuring out a way to help support them.
Thanks. Yeah, I think, is it a way to put a clause, like, to say, like, these two organizations work together somehow? Is that, you think that's something that could be done?
I don't think we can force entities to work with each other. I think the city would have, have an issue forcing their hand to do that.
Forced to work with somebody on the grant, a state grant, and I'm forced to work with two other organizations on a state grant. And I, I just, because I was looking at that, like, some have more experience than others. But they kind of said, to get this award, you need to work with this one and this one. But we did all get our separate awards, but they did say, and now we're all working together on this project. It's a clean energy project from Mass E C. But they're kind of forcing that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested to see what, what, what things we can do in that situation in real property. I'd be concerned that, you know, we would be providing undue competition to somebody else if we said you have to work with this company. So then another company would say, hey, why aren't you telling them to work with me?
Maybe the higher ranking ones, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, one thing I will say, you know, you've mentioned Nihai. Nihai developed single-family homes. They wanted to move into doing a tax credit development, which is what they're doing for Brightwood Elementary. To do that, they said, we've never done this kind of project before. And they went out and looked for a tax credit developer. And they put a proposal into us that was a partnership, you know, they found their partner. We're certainly, and we weren't involved in that. I mean, we, in theory, could, you know, bring people together for, you know, some kind of community event where people could meet each other. But I think from the city's perspective, we don't want to be in the midst of a competition. We want the teams, you know, we want teams to, to figure out themselves how to come together. So that might be something, you know, whatever we can do to support that, we can do that. And as I said, we can do the supporting people to get connected to this help that Mass Housing is providing to emerging developers that are doing housing development.
Wondering if you could put a clause that say, we look at collaboratives, maybe the collaborative applicants get a better weighting or something like that, I don't know. Because I've seen like, RFPs that say there has to be some type of community component, not knowing what that is, but working with the community in some type of way. Maybe we're supporting, or we could just try it, pilot it, supporting like collaborative efforts with senior and newer developers.
Yeah, we've started to put in some of ours. I think recently we had one, it might have been Rifle Street, where we gave extra points in sort of, I think it was kind of like an equitable development category where you got extra points if you were local. I'm not sure how we worded it, but I think we can do things like that that might help towards that effort. I also wonder if like, if we had, I don't know if there is a way to, you know, if we had smaller parcels in, you know, a small, single-family parcel that we could, I don't know if you can restrict who can propose or.
What is happening is not restricting, you're giving another category so that if they're losing.
Sort of something up to the smaller development community, I guess.
Well, if they're losing points on experience, they're able to gain points by being local, for instance. Or, you know, community-based or, you know, thinking about, yeah, we'd have to think about the language. But there are other things we can put in there to, to give points. We're not going to be able to take away the experience one, but you might get the points on community that balance out the ones on experience.
Well, thank you for listening. Thank you for taking the suggestions. It would, it would be a good like focus group because although I'm a developer, but I, and I work with a lot of the small developers. Because we're trying to figure out how to make them a bigger developer, like put the years of experience together. And so I'm just hearing it so often, like, why aren't we getting the same opportunities? So I was just trying to understand why. So you really gave great explanations as far as the federal funding goes and as far as years of experience is years of experience. But just trying to figure out how to give them a chance to get there, you know?
Well, so we definitely share the concern and want to get jobs local and get, you know, have local developers growing, absolutely. So I think, you know, ourselves thinking through a little bit more.
All right, good discussion, everybody, and thanks. Thank you, Councilor Whitfield, for bringing this to our attention. I thought it was a good discussion and hopefully it leads to some more progress in this area. So if there's no further questions, we're going to close this subcommittee meeting out. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
See ya.